Thank you everyone for your patience and welcome this evening to the City of North Plains, City Council Special Session Meeting, Monday, August 26, 2024, at 7:05. Please stand up for the budget meeting.
The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lori. Thank you. Mayor Hanahan?
Here.
Counselor Page?
Here.
Counselor Kendall?
There.
Counselor Payton?
Present.
Counselor Sheldon?
Present.
Counselor Smith is excused and we are keeping an eye out for Counselor Martinez. She had a little medical emergency.
All right, great. Thank you. Before I ask for the approval of the consent agenda, I would like to move item 8A, Resolution Number 2278, the early literacy specialist full-time library position, up before the public hearing. Are there any corrections or additions to the August 5th City Council minutes that we need to be aware of? All right, in addition to the agenda and minutes, we are also approving Resolution 2276, reappointing Patty Burns and Gaynor and King to the Parks Board Recreation. Are there any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So.
You have a second?
I'll second. All right, we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carried. Lori, I don't know if you want to reach out to Counselor Martinez. She says that it's still trying to, she's still trying to get into the meeting, so just wanted to share that.
I'll sit next.
All right, next up on our agenda is public comment. At this time, is there anyone in the room or online that wishes to speak on something not on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on. All right. Let's look at Resolution 2278, Early Literacy Specialist Full-Time Library Position.
Good evening, Mayor, Hanahan, councilors. When someone leaves our organization, it's an opportunity to review the team, our current resources, and look for the best impact to the community. You have a resolution before you to change our part-time early literacy specialist position to a full-time early literacy specialist position to increase literacy and learning in the North Plains community. And we had two staff leave our team, one retirement and one for a different position. And so this change will not, will not affect our bottom line. It's within our current personnel.
And any questions or comments for Robin?
I don't like to, or actually take too much into hiring and departments and their staffing. I'm just kind of wondering, says this is essential job, is this, this is a simple job, what? What, for everybody who's here, can we kind of go over what they, what they do as far as their positions? We have, this is, yes, 30%, 30%.
Oh, the breakdown.
Right, right, sorry.
Well, all of our staff work frontline service. And so everyone, all staff learn the basic library operations. And then we have some positions with specialties. So early literacy specialist will tend the majority of her time on programming, or there's literacy in youth. So, for example, the story times, we do student support programs that include not only reading, but also some basic math skills, elementary school student support with STEM programming, order battle books, visits to classrooms, partnering with the schools to bring programming to the library that helps support the, the core learning that's happening in the schools to help students reach their goals. This position, the breakdown, you'll see about 10% working that frontline customer service and connected with the community that way, about 50% is that programming piece. There'll be training and development that includes, right now Emily is co-chairing or co-running a series of supercharged storytime programs at the state library. So the head of the children's services division, and Emily are doing that. So that'd be part of that 10% of, of training. That's a little more details about how Emily spends her time.
So mostly working with like preschools in the area and the actual school districts and homeschoolers?
Correct.
Each one of these.
Yeah, homeschool, preschool, homeschool, correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Have you seen, and I've been, you know, read your monthly reports, but for the folks in the room that maybe have not seen your reports over the last several years, can you give us an idea of how the access to, this has actually grown in the community within the library and, and what value she actually brings to the position and to the community and the library?
Sure. So as many of you know, we added a second elementary school in North Plains about four years ago. And with that, we have an increase in students visiting the library. We have a wonderful student library card program partnership with those four school districts. So every elementary school student in public schools get a library card that they can then come in and use at our libraries. So our staff visits every classroom twice a year and wants to talk about the student library card and then wants in the spring to promote summer reading and then also attend various school events. So Emily has been doing this since she spent her time early literacy specialist now for about those four years. And the demand has grown. We, you can see from our statistics that checkouts in the library have gone up just steadily over the past, since we came back around pandemic times. Emily was recognized by Senator Solomon for the pandemic response to keep live storytimes going online for them, for youth, because the preschools are all closed. So it was, it had a huge impact on having a space for literacy learning during that time. And then she continues to bring wonderful programs to, and that, I mean, it sounds, you know, the library is fine, we put all the play and learning in the library. So even the stuff they have on sleepover, for example, which Emily's idea is something that brings kids into the library, you know, for a fun reason, maybe build a graphic book or two. I can't tell you in how many ways Emily goes above and beyond in her work. And it's, she's very passionate about it, it's very meaningful to her. She took a well-deserved break after summer reading, so she's out of town or she would be here. But I was very pleased to be able to find it in the budget to make this opportunity and expand. This is aligned with her strategic goals to expand our student support and, and learn.
Well, I can, I can attest that I have the witness to what she does and has done in the library. Been at storytime with her where she's talking to a group of 10 or 12 little kids and they're engaged and, and that sort of thing. And I think it's fabulous, something that's really wonderful, the more that we can connect with kids and their parents and each other, which is awesome. And one other question I had, is this a sustainable budget item? Like I, I want, you know, thinking down the road and keeping her on, on board for as long as possible. So do you foresee it to be sustainable in your budget?
Thank you, yes. I think this is, this is a reality. As we go into next spring, when we're working on our next biennial budget, this position will be able to be, to continue within our, what the appropriate budget for the services we're providing, because as we have more business in the library, we will need a little more staffing, but this is within our current FTE. And we won't, there will not be no recommendations to reduce that in the next budget cycle since we're having.
Counselor Martinez, I see my desk, and I just want to jump on and just see if you have any questions for Robin and Resolution 2278, the early literacy specialist full-time library position.
Thank you. Hopefully you guys can hear me. No, no questions. Thank you. Sorry for the technical difficulties I'm having.
It's us.
I, I just, I feel okay. All right, thank you. Anyone else have any questions or comments for Robin? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move adoption of Resolution, or 2278, a resolution for North Plains, creating a full-time early literacy specialist position.
We have a first and a second. Need further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you just come into Jesse Mays and you want to provide a public comment for the public hearing that we will be opening here shortly, please see Lori to fill out a yellow comment card.
All right. All right, moving on to our next agenda item, which is the public hearing for City Files CUP 24-018, DR 24-019, and AP 24-024. And because this is a public hearing, I do have a script that I do need to read. So bear with me. All right, at this time, I am going to open up the public hearing for CUP 25-018, DR 24-019, and AP 24-024, appeal for the application for the marijuana dispensary in North Plains at 7:19. So this is how we will conduct our hearing. The staff report, I will call for the staff report. After the staff report, we will have testimony from the public in this following order. The applicant, the appellate, testimony and support the application, testimony from those opposed to the application, neutral testimony, and rebuttal from the advocate. Staff may then respond to any issues identified in the testimony, and the councilors may ask questions of staff or the witnesses at any time. I will then close the record and no more evidence or testimony will be received. The council will then discuss the application and appeal. The council may reach a decision tonight, or it may continue to keep, to the, may continue the hearing to a later date. If the hearing is continued, this is the only notice you will receive of the date and time. If you wish to speak tonight, please make sure to fill out a yellow card, testimony card, and hand it to the city recorder. The card must include your name and address for the record. And those, for those who are attending online, I will ask you to raise your hand. And when you are called on, you will state your name and provide your address via email to thecityrecorder@lauri.lessmeister@northplains.gov. When you come up to testify, you will speak your name and resident city only. But I will confirm that the address that you put on the card is your act, actual physical address. Testimony tonight will be limited to 15 minutes for the applicant, 15 minutes for the appellate, and three minutes for all other testimony. The applicant may also have five minutes for rebuttal. Lori will help me keep time and during that process. The city's decision tonight must be limited to the evidence and the record and the applicable code criteria, which are described in the staff report. Please direct your comments to those criteria and other criteria you believe applies. Again, the city's decision on this application must be based on these criteria. Despite the importance of other issues or concerns, the city council can only base its decision on whether the evidence shows the application complies with the criteria. Failure to raise an issue in sufficient detail to allow the city council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals, AKA LUBA, on that basis. Further, the applicant's failure to raise any constitutional or other concerns about the conditions of approval prevents a challenge in circuit court on that basis. At this time, I'm going to ask if the city councillor has any expertise communications, bias, or conflict of interest you need to declare.
All right, then.
I just want to share that a community member emailed me regarding this topic. I am able to remain impartial. I also want to declare that a resident also engaged in conversation with me on this subject. I did ask him to provide all of his questions, especially the technical questions, and asked him to go to the staff members to answer any questions that he might have. I too feel like I can remain partial, impartial on this topic. Is there anyone in the room that would have any kind of questions or concerns about the expertise communication from the city council? All right, hearing none, we will go ahead and move forward with the staff report. I'll start with Rob Drake, and then we'll move over to Steve Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City councilors, I'd like to make a public statement tonight. For tonight's meeting, Planning Commission Chair Stuart King submitted a letter from himself to the mayor and city council for tonight's appeal to the city council. It is highly unusual that such a letter would be sent out by the PC chair considering that it is an appeal from the Planning Commission he chairs. As interim city manager, I manage the planning manager, Steve Miller. The Planning Commission Chair has taken it upon himself to publicly criticize the planning manager and not consult me first. Such criticism is inappropriate and ill-advised. Such action also embarrasses the city of North Plains. The planning manager is a skilled professional who has always behaved with respect toward applicants and public alike. He has earned our respect and support. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Steve Moore.
Yeah, thank you. Show my screen here.
It's not online. I'm being told that it's not online.
There's a, there's a different link that I've sent out. Do you have any email address I can send it to?
Or the building is online.
Andy?
Yeah.
I think I got her email address.
Okay, just for the folks who are online, Counselor Cameron, can you confirm that you can see my shirt screen?
Steve, I see our city attorney is also online, Chris Creed.
Chris, can you see the screen?
I, I can, but I used the, the email link on the agenda wasn't working. Lori emailed me an updated link, and that's what I used to get in.
Understood.
Okay, so we can zoom it out, so everybody that is not in the room can see it.
Sorry, this is Counselor Martinez. I can't see it. I'm trying this on my phone and I haven't done this, but I can see the screen.
Great, great. So it sounds like maybe we have a person who's having trouble getting on because they have a problem with our, our link there. But it sounds like Lori is trying to help them join. So hopefully they can get in during my presentation. But I'll try and talk slowly, but I do want to get through it in a fairly consistent fashion. So everybody.
Who starts? Is there a way to update the?
I'm, I'm working as fast as I can, James.
Can we just take a, I'm going to bring.
Right.
Can we just take?
Yeah.
A few minutes?
Yeah.
And let her work through, because I am receiving a couple of messages to folks in the community that have been possibly trying. Are you just going to put that off Facebook?
I don't have one, so I can't.
Is, this is who you're waiting for, Emily?
And.
Yeah, okay.
She said she died.
Yep, but they, they just joined. Were you waiting for any other folks?
Yeah.
Were we waiting for them? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's on the web, so go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and City Councilors. Steve Miller, City Manager with the City of North Plains. As the mayor has indicated, we're here tonight for an appeal of a commission decision regarding Files CUP 2418 and Design Review Application DR 24-19. I'm going to keep my slides open on the side because I do, I'm going to bounce around a little bit. So that's why I'm leaving it up like that to try and be efficient in getting through this. Staff did prepare a staff report on August 19th and sent that to the city council as well as all the people who had submitted comments into the record, as well as the applicant. Oh, the applicable code sections that are relevant to the appeal are the appeal section of the code, the conditional use permit criteria, and the off-street loading requirements. Regarding the 120-day rule, this application was submitted on April 5th of '24. It was deemed complete on April 19th of '24. And so the 120-day deadline would have expired on August 19th. However, as a result of the continued Planning Commission hearing, the applicant did grant the city an additional 14 days on the 120-day clock. So that clock now expires on September 3rd. So I, I know that the mayor indicated that there is the possibility for a continued hearing, but due to the timeframe that we have right now to make a final decision on this application, staff is looking for a decision tonight, unless the applicant would agree to an extension. So we do have that issue in front of us as well. So first, I want to appeal is the conditional use permit application. And it's regarding the criterion and the conditional use permit criteria as relates to the park buffer. And the city council, I mean, the planning commission determined after continued hearing that there was insufficient evidence in the record for them to determine if the council understood the recommendation for the park buffer measurement. And so as a result of that, they also concluded that, you know, the, the park buffer as required in the code is what they, they settled on. And one of the things I'll show with you here is your ordinance. This is a portion of your ordinance. It was obviously too much to put on one slide, but this is the portion that. I have to try and slide this down just a little bit. Looks like I don't have much play there.
You can, did you try to move it to one side?
I could maybe have to move to one side to spread in my way, okay. So this is a portion of the ordinance that the city council adopted in November of '22. And as you can see, there's lettering or there's language in there that is highlighted in red and struck through, and there's a language there that's in blue and underlined. And as the council is aware of, the language that is crossed out is the language to be removed from the code. And the language that is underlined is the proposed new language for the code. Any language that is not either in red and being struck through or in color of blue and underlying is the existing. is the existing code language where there's no proposed change to the code. And so this is from the 2016 rules that were adopted by council. And as you can see in line item number four there, it says that no structure shall be located within 500 feet of any park. And that was the language that was in the 2016 code. And so there was no specification in 16 on how that measurement was to be made at that time. And so if somebody came into the city, we would have to effectively go look through the legislative history to understand what the intent was for how that buffer would be measured. And what was, what accompanied that particular 2016 approval was a map. And then it was this map right here, even though it says it was May of 2022, it was the map that was prepared by the planning consultant for those meetings based upon the 2016 rules. And so what you see here is you have a radius measurement on the park buffers. And Jesse Mays, you have an additional thousand foot buffer around Jesse Mays because the city gave an additional buffer for Jesse Mays. But everything else is 500 feet. And what it shows is that it was, there's a very limited corridor and on the Glenco roadway where a dispensary potentially could be located. And now I'll start moving to the legislative history a little bit so you can understand how we got here tonight. In March of 22, the city's planner Heather Austin with 3J brought it to the planning commission's attention that they were going to do some work sessions and take a look at the marijuana rules and see if there might be a need to reduce some of the buffers and the setbacks over in the current code. And so in May, they kicked off those planning commission meetings, those work sessions. And what happened was they started with this map right here. And there were some conversations about how they could potentially change some of the buffers. And so they talked about going to a walking path measurement for the park buffer. And so when they got to their June 22nd meeting, the planner brought forward this map here showing what they believed was what this planning commission wanted was a walking path measurement. And what the planning commission shared with the planner at that time was that they did not believe that that was accurate, the way it was being depicted. Because if you were to walk up 500 feet, then, then the buffer should stop or it should stop at an arterial. That was the conversation that was being had. 500 feet of walking distance or the buffer stops at an arterial. In this case, that would be Glenco. And so it would open up the middle section of this, this area here. The planner understood what was being said and agreed that there was an error in that map. And so when they came back for the 2022 work session, the planner brought forward this particular map here. And at that time, there was agreement that this was more accurate, the way this map was showing the 500 foot walking path measurement. As a result of that meeting, there was no meeting in August due to the garlic festival. And so they reconvened in the joint work session on September 22nd, 2022, which coincidentally was my first day at the City of North Plains. And so I did attend that meeting and listened in and heard what was being said and they discussed. So for that meeting, they brought forward this particular staff report. And what it says is that that there will be some uses that the specific specifically updates to the North Plains zoning development related to marijuana uses could include buffers from parks are drawn along the walking path, buffers stop at arterial street. That's what the last two bullets say there. And that was what was discussed at the joint work session along with this map. As a result of that work session, everybody was in agreement that, you know, this, this was the right way to move forward. And so they moved forward to October with this planning commission's hearings on the proposed revisions to the code. And what that did is they came forward with this particular document here. And I know it's very hard to see, but I can't get this language any bigger unfortunately on this slide. And at the bottom, it changed the language from something to be considered to saying also included in the packet is a map indicating where marijuana or suicide uses could be located based on the proposed code changes in either the C2 or M2. And at the bottom of that slide there, it says that defined parameters for buffers along a walking route and at an arterial street. That was presented to the planning commission again along with this map. And the planning commission made a recommendation of approving this proposal to the city council. And so the city council held their first meeting in November. And they also held their second reading of this in November as well. And at both of those meetings, they chose to adopt the recommendation from the planning commission as proposed in their recommendation. And so one thing I have to share with you here is a unique little slide that can show you the progression of the maps. So we started with that map, we moved to this map, and then we ultimately ended with the final map here. And what that does is when you look at everything there, starting with the language that was in the original code, there was no clarity on how the park buffer was to be measured in 2016 or in 22. And so that puts staff into a situation of trying to understand how are we supposed to interpret our code? And that came up in the planning commission hearing. When the code is silent on these type of situations, how do you get an understanding of what the intent was of the folks who went through the decision-making process to adopt some new language? And so one of the things staff was asked to do at that time was to reach out to our legal counsel to get clarity on how to interpret the code. And what we learned was that there was some, there's a precedence, there's some case law on this matter of interpreting code. And what he said was that the courts give the city wide latitude in being able to interpret their code, particularly when the legislative history can lead to a plausible conclusion on what the outcome should be in these situations. This also comes up in our code when we have to get, sometimes we have to refer back to our comprehensive plan to understand what the intent was for some of our things. Sometimes we have to refer back to transportation system plans to understand what some of the street standards and so forth is supposed to be. So it's not uncommon when we're trying to get to the code to rely on history and other documents to be able to interpret the meaning of what the council wanted to have happen. And so in this particular situation, we were brought to our attention that we could do that if there is case law that we're allowed to interpret our code. And as a result of that, since I was fairly new at that time, I did meet with the other players that were involved with this particular text amendment, which would have been the consulting planner Heather Austin and my manager, the city manager. As we talked about that, we agree that there was a change with this adoption of this code, this text amendment, and that it did change the way the buffer would be measured, that it would go from a walk, I mean, from a radius around the park to a walking path measurement. And so when the applicant came forward to better understand how the rules have changed, because this, this particular applicant had been in conversation with the city for some time, myself and the city mentor indicated to him that there, there was a change and that the particular property in question here had now become potentially available for a dispensary, provided it could satisfy all the conditional use permit criteria. And so they proceeded in that, with that direction. The current application that we have.
Steve, look, if I may, I just want to jump in and make one clarification here on this slide. The third bullet point, I think I did in fact write that, but that was before I had the benefit of all this legislative history. And I think it's clear the record shows the planning commission intended it to be a walking driving distance because that's in the planning commission staff report. But that language was not then carried forward into the city council staff report. So although the city council did in fact adopt the planning commission's recommendations whole cloth, we don't have, we can't say with complete clarity that that's why this, the city council adopted the changes in that code section or that the walking driving distance was how the city council intended the buffer to be measured versus a straight line circle. So there is legislative history in the record that shows the planning commission intended it to be measured by a walking driving distance, but the legislative, the legislative history is less clear on the city council's intention, which is why we're asking you guys to interpret it in the first instance tonight. Thanks, Steve.
Yes, thank you, Chris. You're here. You beat me to it, so I appreciate that. I was going to clarify that the west.
Okay.
Misinformation, not misinformation, but maybe there, there could have been some potential lack of clarity in the presentation to the city council. So that, that is really on this particular appeal item, where we're at tonight. And we, along with the applicant, are looking to the city council to understand if staff did interpret the code correctly based upon what happened in 2022 when they revisited the marijuana rules and chose to make some adjustments to those rules. And so that is the first item that's under appeal right now tonight. Your second item that's under appeal has to do with the condition of approval as it relates to the off-street loading. This particular item was discussed during the hearing, but it did not get brought up on the continued hearing because once the planning commission decided that they were going to deny the application, it really became a moot point at that point, but it does need to be raised at this time in case that decision is overturned. And so what they're asking for is a, a way to deliver product to the store where they could utilize one of the parking spaces for what they have shared with us would be a fan delivery, scheduled fan deliveries. It does not require a large vehicle to deliver the product to the dispensary. And so based on the conversation that we had during the planning commission hearing, staff is comfortable with a change of that condition of approval. Two deliveries shall be made either one during non-business hours or two during business hours, but only on days and hours on which deliveries are scheduled. And only one parking space shall be used for those deliveries. So staff is comfortable with that based upon the operating characteristics of the proposed use. We think they will not compound or not complicate the, the parking at the particular location. And so in this particular case, based on the legislative, legislative history and my own conversations with the folks that were present in 2022, staff believes that the city council should approve those use as presented by the applicant and their application. So tonight, the council's options are it can affirm the planning commission's decision. It can reverse the decision or it may amend the decision as it sees fit. And that, that concludes my presentation and I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Council, do you have any questions for staff this time?
Quick question. If the code to be changed for the buffers, the purpose we amended, is this like a zoning thing where you notice people that are going to change how, how we're going to measure?
What we?
What I'm asking is, would we need to, would we need to notice that we're going to change buffers? Would that, would people affected? Like, would we do any kind of anything with this? Notice the need to allow for that?
All the, all the meetings were noticed.
Would we might be, would it need to notice or that the proposed change in, in measurement?
What I'm indicating is that when the, when the city came forward with this test amendment proposal, it was noticed as required by state law and our, and our own code. And so those first meetings kind of kick off that process, if you will. And then when they go to their next meetings, that is effectively the notice for the next meeting for the people that are in attendance. There's no additional notice provided for those work sessions. There's the, it's kind of like a continued hearing, right? When you come into the hearing, we noticed the first initial hearing. And then all the people that come into the hearing and participate, their notice for continued hearing is at that meeting in that moment there, saying we're going to continue to a date certain.
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the public notice that the property would be affected by a, by, by a rule change. Not the people that are applying and asking for continuance. I'm asking for, is, is there requirement of a public notice if we're going to change some of the zoning as far as the measurements go?
Yes, and that's what I was indicating. There, there is. And it looks like Chris would like to also comment on that.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. What you're referring to is referred to generally as Measure 56 notice. It's codified at ORS 227.178 for the city. And it requires the city to send individualized written notice to every property owner affected by a zone change. And it defines zone change to be a change in the zoning code that limits or prohibits a use previously allowed in the zone. Now, these zone changes back, you, you, I'm sure you recall the whole marijuana zoning legislation, ballot measures, all of that was quite a, a pub, the issue of public contention. And so when the city council got, a city got around to amending its code to allow those uses, what you were doing was actually allowing additional uses beyond what was previously allowed in the zone. So Measure 56 notice was not required because you were not limiting or prohibiting uses previously allowed in the zone. Only when you're limiting what somebody, the zoning that somebody had previously enjoyed, are you required to send out Measure 56 notice. Otherwise, for standard code changes like these, you follow a city standard notice process, but publish in the newspaper, put it on the website, do all those sorts of things. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that was 2016. That's about 2022. Would that, would that notice be applied for those changes?
That, that notice would not have been required in this instance. No.
Are you?
Any other questions for staff? Counselor, please.
Thank you. Steve?
It's not on.
Thanks.
There it is.
Steve, I wanted to just see maybe, I know you had a slide up there previously, but if you could maybe pull up tonight's agenda packet and reference page 740, just some of the text in there. Have a question.
I don't have the agenda packet on this computer right now, but, but Rowan is pulling it up, so I will be able to look at it here in just a moment.
Oh, yeah, no problem.
And Counselor, was that page 73?
740.
747.
For references, 1,095 pages for us to go over tonight. Which is nice.
What, what part am I looking at, Counselor?
Yeah, so again, this is page 740 in the PDF. It's the legal section, number seven, 2022. And there's a section in there that I had commented on, that I can read it verbatim if you'd like. I just wanted you to be able to have it in front of you to reference. Let me know when you're ready and I can read it out loud.
These, these are the minutes, you know, from, from your hearing or from your meetings. That's what that is. And so that, that's just Lori writing down what was communicated at that meeting. I, I guess I'm not totally sure of your question though.
Yeah, so, so my question is, I'm going to read just the excerpt on this and maybe help get some clarification for myself. But, you know, I know memory can be foggy, right? And we're all trying to figure out, you know, what is the radius? So in this specific minute section, it says, "Counselor, we've been asked about the rules of other jurisdictions in our area due with regards to having these businesses referring to marijuana near residential areas, specifically about the homes behind the chief or archery business. Planning Director Steve Miller said that the buffers and setbacks that were in place in the commercial zone were squeezing any opportunities at all for any businesses to go into that area. Heather Austin noted that the 100 foot buffer to the residential area is not changing, but it is currently what we have in our code. It is the setbacks in the front that were updated because with that 100 foot buffer and a 50 foot setback, it basically made the lots along Glenco unusable."
Yes, I appreciate that. I did see that. I have read that. And I do see that that was in the air, that comment by myself. And that probably had to do with my, my short time here at the city. I wish I would have deferred to Heather Austin at that moment. That would have been a, a better response by me in my effort to answer the question. I erred.
Yeah, the next sentence is, "The only thing being changed was the front setback."
That's correct. That, that's where the error occurred.
So to clarify, the setback was or was not changed?
The setback was changed. It was removed.
It was removed. So that is now encompassing that section on Glenco Road?
Yes, so in addition to the regular setbacks of the underlying zone, there was an additional 50 foot setback. And so there was conversation around that setback at the work sessions, how that could. Um, and so there was conversation around that setback at the um work sessions, how that could um. You know, if, if the lot was a hundred feet deep and you had a twenty-foot front yard setback with a fifty-yard setback. It could effectively create a lot that, you know, potentially could have a, have a suspension, but with those setbacks, it would include it. And so they decided that they would remove that setback and just go with the underlying setbacks of the, the zoning district.
Thank you. Do you need the questions from counsel? Can I run them, Counselor Martinez?
No questions uh for me right now.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. All right, so it looks like at this time now, we will take um testimony from the pub, on from the public. In this following order, the applicant, so the applicant would come up, please, to the table. Like you did last, state your name, I would imagine, state your business address or the city president, which would be great.
Thank you, Mayor Lanning and President Sheldon and council members. My name is Alex Berger. I'm an attorney with Immur Law Group. Uh, and I represent the applicant and appellant, which is the same party, Dispenser LLC. Um, and our office is located at one oh eight Northwest Ninth Avenue, Suite three hundred, Portland nine seven two one nine.
Can you make sure the mic is on? There's a, there's a green light on the top, on the top there. It should be pulled forward.
Is that better?
That's better, yeah.
Should I repeat all that?
No, you're fine. Um, and I just want to, um, just remind, you have fifteen minutes for this presentation. Okay, and um Lori, you'll keep track. Thanks.
May I ask, since, since we are the applicant and appellant, um and I believe each gets fifteen minutes, we might go a couple of minutes over fifteen.
Okay.
Thank you.
You'll also have time for the, the battle as well.
Uh, my name is Dennis Sivers. I'm one of the owners of Dispenser LLC. Along with Brian Bergman and Stephanie Garcia. These two people have a long history in the medical marijuana industry. And our company, which is headquartered on McCattam Avenue in Portland, Oregon. Uh, also has dispensaries in Seaside, Newburgh, and Monmouth. And if you guys are interested in how. We act as a corporate citizen of a ci, of a town, I encourage you to contact your peers in those cities. Uh, we're very proud of the work, uh work and deal with people's uh needs. And I'll turn the mic back to our attorney to talk, because this is really illegal.
Thanks, Dennis. Um, so I just want to address a few points. Um, first, I want to address that. We believe that the legislative history does um indeed constitute more than sufficient evidence demonstrating that the city council. Was aware of the planning commission's walking distance buffer recommendations and adopted that recommendation, which I think would address um the city attorney's statements. Um, first, does, does everybody have a copy of our August twentieth letter that we submitted? I'm going to refer to some exhibits in there. I brought some extra copies if.
No, they're digital copies. It's, it's all, it's all, it's all digital, but.
So first, if you turn to exhibit A, pages one and two. Um, you will see a map of the proposed site and its walking distance to Little Morton Park along the public right of way. Um, there are two routes and you'll see that each route measures, in fact, over one thousand feet from the proposed site to the Morton Park. So. The legislative history in the record demonstrates the city councils intend to adopt the planning commission's recommendation to interpret the park buffer criterion. In terms of walking distance. The facts show that on September sixth, twenty twenty two, staff first presented the planning commission's recommendations to both the city council. Um, and the planning commission at the joint city council planning commission work session. And at that work session, staff provided the council materials, including the memo that Mr. Miller was referring to. Excerpts from that memo are um attached to our letter. In exhibit D, page two. And you'll notice that city council was indeed presented with the memo indicating. Um, that the current setback and buffer standards required for marijuana uses leave very little opportunity to actually locate. A marijuana business in the city. And then listed below. Are the recommendations, including that the buffers from parks would be drawn along a walking path. Also included in the memo is a reference to attachment A, which is a map that Mr. Miller already presented. That shows where marijuana uses could be conditionally permitted in the C two and M two zones if the above updates are adopted. And so that map. Is in exhibit D, page five, and you'll see the red area along Glencoe Road. Is where a conditional, or I'm sorry, a um, a cannabis retail establishment may be located. Under the recommendations that were provided to the city council and planning commission. And then again, on November seventh, twenty twenty two, there was a public hearing at which city council reviewed and voted on the first reading of the planning commission's recommendations. And staff again presented the council with the updated buffer map. And when presenting the updated buffer map, planning manager Miller stated, when referring to the red area on the updated map. Quote, in terms of a dispensary, the dispensaries would be allowed in the C two zone. For us, this is primarily going to be Glencoe Road. And so it was with that understanding that the recommendations that the cap, that were before the council. Led to the conclusion that this red area would be available for uh cannabis retail establishments. It was with that understanding that ultimately. Council voted to adopt the planning commission's recommended marijuana standard updates. And so in our opinion, the legislative history clearly demonstrates that the city council was aware of the planning commission's recommendation that the park buffer criterion be interpreted. To measure the buffer by walking distance and adopted that recommendation. As Mr. Miller indicated, staff agreed with that legislative history, that that legislative history indicated that the city council um indeed. Uh, adopted the recommendations with that understanding under the new upper map. In both, in all of the staff reports, June fifth, twenty twenty four, on page eighteen to nineteen. The July third, twenty twenty four staff report on page six, and then the latest August nineteenth staff report. From page sixteen to seventeen, in each instance, uh, the staff came to the conclusion that um. The planning commission's recommendation for the. Uh, park buffer to be measured in walking distance was adopted based on the fact that uh this map was presented. As evidence of where uh, under the recommendations, a um. A marijuana dispensary could be located. Um, and so in our opinion, the legislative history shows that city council instructed staff to review cannabis-related zoning code provisions, and that's. Uh, in the August nineteenth staff report on page eleven. The planning mission adopted recommendations, including interpreting the park buffer to be measured in walking distance as depicted in the updated buffer map. And that the city council adopt planning commission's recommendations, including the redrawn park buffer to be measured in walking distance. The legislative history therefore establishes that the park upper criterion is satisfied if the proposed site. Is more than five hundred feet from all public parks by walking distance. And as you saw in exhibit A, the applicant's proposed site is more than a thousand feet away from the nearest park by walking distance. I would also like to point out that even if this council finds that the foregoing evidence is unpersuasive in terms of the legislative history. The council may nevertheless revise the planning commission's interpretation of the park buffer criterion now and still find in favor of the applicant. Longstanding Oregon case law allows a local governing body to revise a local code interpretation during the same application process. Measuring by walking distance here is a plausible interpretation. Because it is the only practical method by which a minor could access a cannabis establishment from a park. Without trespassing through private property, walking through walls and other physical barriers. Plus, the, that interpretation would open up opportunity in the C two zone to locate a cannabis retail establishment. Which the planning commission and city council intended when crafting and adopting the new, more relaxed marijuana zoning standards in the first place. If the council were to again deny the application, then no cannabis, no cannabis dispensary. May be cited in a large portion of the properties along Glencoe Road. And the chances that a cannabis dispensary will ever be located in the city are severely diminished. I would also like to comment briefly on the planning commission chair King's letter, which he submitted um to the record a couple of days ago. First, the applicant objects to the acceptance of the letter into the record for this proceeding. The letter is improper considering that it is the planning commission's decision, which is subject of the appeal. And the planning commission chair should not be commenting or modifying the commission's July seventeenth, twenty twenty four final order. In an attempt to affect the outcome of this appeal. But to the extent that the council chooses to accept Chair King's letter, um, the applicant would like to make a few points. Chair King seems to argue that because the city council did not adopt an outright revision of the park buffer criterion. And did not add codified language stating that the buffer is to be measured in walking distance. That that means somehow that the criterion must be interpreted to measure the buffer as a straight line measurement. But that proposition ignores the text of the code provision itself and how local codes are interpreted under Oregon law. The text of the code provision does not state that the five hundred-foot buffer is to be measured by a straight line, as Chair King seems to assume. Rather, the text is silent as to how the buffer is to be measured. And as the city attorney pointed out in the June twentieth interpretation, which is exhibit C. I quote, the issue is how to measure the five hundred-foot buffer requirement for a marijuana dispensary in the city code, since the code is silent on it. One way is the traditional bubble, where we would draw a five hundred-foot circle centered on the subject property. The other way is to measure the buffer by driving slash walking distance within the right of way. Later, he states, either interpretation is plausible. And under Oregon law, a code provision is ambiguous if it is susceptible to more than one reasonable interpretation. Or plausible interpretation. Because, as the city attorney points out, there are at least two plausible interpretations of how to measure the park buffer. The provision is ambiguous. And when a provision is ambiguous under Oregon law, decision makers examine the legislative history to determine how to interpret the ambiguous provision. Here, as I believe the applicant has shown, the legislative in his, history in the record demonstrates that city council intended the park buffer to be measured by walking distance. County staff agrees that the legislative history, quote, removes any doubt about the correct interpretation of the buffer standard. Which is that the buffer, I quote again, is measured by walking distance using the public right of way. It is therefore irrelevant. That the council did not revise the language of the park buffer criterion. The language was ambiguous before and after the council adopted the code changes. But the legislative history, as we've gone over, makes clear that the council intended the buffer to be measured by walking distance. For all those reasons, we respectfully ask the council to follow city staff's recommendation. That the park buffer criterion imposes a five hundred-foot buffer as measured by walking distance and accordingly approve the application. Alternatively, we ask that the council revise the planning commission's interpretation to correctly measure the park buffer by walking distance. In order to realize its goal to provide opportunities to locate a cannabis retail establishment in the C two zone and accordingly approve the application. Regarding the off-street loading condition that we request, we mentioned in our August twenty twenty four letter on pages six and seven. And as recommended in August, the August nineteenth staff report, we ask that if the council were to approve the application. And intends to adopt the staff's earlier condition regarding off-street loading, that the council adopt our revised proposed condition. That condition would allow deliveries during business hours, but only if the applicant reserves one existing parking space for deliveries. This would maintain the minimum three parking spaces that the applicant must maintain for customers. While allowing the dispensary to accept deliveries during normal business hours. So that concludes our presentation. And then Brian, if you want to say something as well? Um, dispensary or dispenser owner Ryan Bergen would like to make a few short comments as well.
You can take the mic off if you want to. Just have to sit on there.
Can you hear me? How about that? Yeah. Um, you know, this has been a long process for us. Um, started looking in North Plains from two thousand fifteen. We were going to put a dispensary in the Shell Station where there is a market, um, because one of the owners at that time uh was family. Um, fast forward to twenty twenty, uh, there was a building for sale on the corner of Glencoe uh Blue House. And um I had emailed the city about that location and they said that it was close, but not quite. And then fast forward to twenty twenty four. I originally had looked at the place that was next to work to this location that we have. And I was told that it was too close to a residential area. And I was also told that the two addresses to the south, which is where we are located. Would fall. Um, we were encouraged to sign a lease, which we did. And we paid the city over eleven thousand dollars in uh application fees and whatnot. Um, we've had a lot of money invested in rent and lawyer fees to the point where we've spent probably over fifty thousand dollars so far. Um, so it's been a frustrating process, but we're here to be good neighbors and be good community members. Um. I know that in the city of Newburgh, where we do have a location, we pay the city about sixty thousand dollars a year in tax. Um, which they can use for whatever they want. Um, the city of North Plains could pass a three percent sales tax. And uh we could contribute to the city tax money that you guys could use for. Parks or whatever you choose to use that money for. Um, and I'd just like to say that we're here to help people and we're not. Here to cause trouble. So we just would like a fair opportunity.
Thank you for the service.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will hear from testimony in support of the application. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Uh, and provide testimony in support of this application that is not the applicant?
Let's see if there's any hands.
Are there any hands up?
I'm not seeing any at the moment, no.
Okay, um, we'll take testimony from those opposed to the application. And I have a few cards here and I'll call you up one at a time when you do come up. Um, uh, first up is Dawn Weber. Dawn, if you could just state your name and city of residence for the. Don, if you could just state your name and city of residence for the record. And I do have a question for you. Is the address on the card your correct address?
Yes.
You don't have to speak it, but you just state your name and the city.
Don Weber, North Plains.
Thank you.
City of North Plains. I've been involved in this process for about five months now. I got involved because I'm out about it in the city a lot. And my initial concern when this came up was it was a bad location for the dispensary because it's next door to friends of mine who used the building for a preschool. And I knew this wouldn't be ideal. And I also have friends, some are here now, who are located right behind the property. And I just felt like, not as far as an opinion on marijuana, I just thought it was a bad location in the living room of an older house. So I proceeded with that in mind. Is there any way we cannot have this happen? And I realized just opinions weren't going to make a difference. So the good news was I'm retired. I started to read up in the codes and I realized there was a code of all these different measurements. Now, what I found out very quickly on the measurements is none of those are ambiguous. All the marijuana codes that the state use straight line measurements. They're very common. And ours were 1,000 feet to a school, 500 feet to a park, a straight line. So when I saw that, then I was curious. There's a park there. So I proceeded with a friend's help to measure. It was only 350 feet. So to be honest, I was excited because that said, that means no dispensary. But when I approached Steve right away, he said, "Well, no, it's not a straight line. It's a sidewalk measurement," which confused me, but it got me motivated to do more research. Because what has confused me all along is I realized there's a tremendous amount of meetings to discuss changing it. But what that showed me was clearly initial people understood it was a straight line. So they were considering making it a longer distance in order to allow more dispensaries. But I talked to experts in measurements. They said, "Well, actually, the simpler way they would have done it, they should have just lowered the number. You don't change. Everything is measured straight lines." But whatever. I realized there was many meetings discussing this roundabout distance. So then I went to, to me, the key documents were the ordinance amendment 485. And in 485, it includes all the changes that the planning commission is bringing to the city council, right? So I looked very closely in that. I like all the little color codes, the red lines, the blue, the yellow. And I'm reading that and there is no change to the one I'm concerned about, which I like that because that means that didn't get changed. So then I also go to the 155075, which is the actual code. And that code is identical to 2016. No changes taken place. So why would I think it changed to a sidewalk? Now, it was obvious from the minutes, I read all these minutes, it said potential changes to code, potential, potential, potential. What was clear to me is this one didn't pass the muster and didn't get approved. So that is, is my concern. It's obvious to me the code didn't get changed. And I guess I'm confused why we're still arguing that it did. The citizens, my other concern and quick comment, citizens did not get a chance to testify because you didn't tell us you're changing the code. Or I would have testified. My neighbor would have testified. We would all testify. I didn't get to because you didn't tell me.
Thank you, Don. Next up is Stuart. Please state your name and city of residence for the record.
My name is Stuart King. I live in North Plains. I am the current chair right now, at least for today. I'm just here to support the planning commission's decision. During continuation of the public hearing, the planning commission asked the planning manager to submit evidence that the city council was aware of the planning commission's intent to change the measuring code, that the city council acted on the planning commission's intent or that the city council intended to change the existing code determination, measuring the distance from a public park. I'm actually not opposed to the application. I'm neutral on the application. I'm just here supporting the planning commission's decision and why we made that decision. We did intend to change it, but we can't, there was no evidence that that recommendation would carry forward to city council. You have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Mike Schurz. Just state your name and city of residence for the record. This is your physical address.
Yes, it is. Mike Schurz, North Plains. So basically.
Just state your name for the record, please.
I did. Mike Schurz.
I'm sorry.
So bottom line with all this, I mean, like Mr. Weber had just said, everything and all the documents it said proposed. So it was proposed, but as of today, it's not changed. So as of right now, the code stands at a 500-foot measurement. And I want to come back to one of Mr. Kim's, our planning managers' maps up there. All Jesse Mays, the schools, all of them. If you look at that map, they're all circles. Straight line measurements. It's not convoluted. It's worded in the code for schools the same as it is for parks. It's worded exactly the same. And everybody agrees that the school's a straight line measurement. Jesse Mays is a straight line measurement. So why try to make it more convoluted by making it a sidewalk measurement is really confusing to me. Because then all you're going to do is if you do make that change, two things. Now you're convoluting it. Now you're changing it. You're opening the door for things. For example, my house bats, but backs up to the school. So with that mentality, I could sell drugs out of my house if it was a state legal drug. Because from my house to the school property, sidewalk measurement is over 1,000 feet. But my fence is on the property line. So if you make that change, two things. Number one, now you're going to convolute it. Now you're going to make it difficult and you're going to open the door for other things, other problems. Keep it straight line measurement like it's always been. The other thing is if you change this ruling from 500 feet to somewhere that's sidewalk, walking, driving, what you're telling people at the city is that you don't care about their kids. That's the way I look at it. That's what I believe. It's, the measurement is the same throughout every city in the state with straight line measurement. Why make it more difficult than it already is? So at this point tonight, if you have to make a decision tonight, you have to deny it because the ruling is still, the code is still 500. And so. Because it was proposed and talked about months and months doesn't mean that it got changed. And at this point, it's not changed. It's still 500.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next up is Stephanie Nelson. This is your physical address on the card. You don't have to state your address, just your name and the city. Thank you.
My name is Stephanie Nelson. I live in North Plains. I wanted to ask the city council if they could uphold the decision by the planning commission. They're volunteers, city, and they were neutral parties with the applicants. Whereas I felt that Steve Miller was not a neutral party as he proposed this document. And I just kind of wanted to bring it to attention that the city planning commissioners, they voted with the code and it said 500 feet from a park. It is measured 350 from the park, a straight line. And the sidewalk, like if you're walking around, like Mike said, it makes it really complicated. And there's a lot of talk about intent. So I'm not an architect, but when I went to college, I intended to be an architect. So intent doesn't necessarily mean that anything happens. So they talked about changing the code, but it was not ever changed for that specific one. They changed other parts of the code, but not the park feature. So I'm asking that the city council will vote with the planning commission team to deny that it's applicable.
Anyone else in the city that needs to speak? Hi. Are you, I'm actually, I'm listening to apparent testimony from opposed. Do you oppose the application?
No.
Okay. Lori or Steve, is there anyone online with a hand raised that wants to speak in opposition of the application?
I have been looking and so far I have not seen any hands raised.
At this time, is there any, are there any mutual testimonies? Meaning you don't care one way or the other? Do you want to speak? Okay.
I don't have kids, so I don't really, it doesn't affect me too much.
All right. All right. Hearing none and seeing none, no hands raised online. We will also now give the applicant an opportunity, five minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, Mayor Ryan. So first, I would just like to say that there is no evidence in the record about how other agencies, other jurisdictions measure these buffers. And I would also like to point out that if the city council had indeed wanted the measurement to be measured in straight line, they could have included that. You could have included that in the code in 2016 or 2022. The OLCC, for example, states in its regulations that 1,000 feet for the purposes of its school buffer requirement means a straight line measurement in radius extending 1,000 feet or less in any direction. And so the fact of the matter is, is that the language is ambiguous and has always been ambiguous. And the legislative history shows that the intent, which is the key word, the intent, which under Oregon law, when a code is ambiguous, it is the intent that must be discerned of those who pass the code. The intent is paramount. And here, the legislative history shows that the city council was presented with a memo that said, yes, these are the proposed changes to the regulations, including a reinterpretation of the buffer map that was, or of the park buffer that was indicated on the buffer map. But then those proposed changes or proposed recommendations were adopted by the city council. I would also like to again object to the planning commission chair's comments that the planning commission had its opportunity to make a finding and explain that finding in the final order. And so now making comments on a decision that is the subject of this appeal is improper. I would also just like to point out that in terms of keeping kids safe, state law prohibits children from going onto a licensed cannabis premises. So regardless of the distance, it's hard, if not impossible, for a child to get onto a licensed premises as opposed to, say, a liquor store, which also prohibits sales to folks who are 21 and under, but does not prohibit a child from being on the premises. And OLCC rules require IDing everyone before a purchase is made or cannabis is accessed. I would also like to point out that, again, a a walking distance measurement is every bit as plausible as a straight measurement, given the practicalities of how a child gets from one place to another. A straight line measurement, especially in this case, if you look at the map, requires walking through walls and private property, which is just not practicable and not easy. I would also like to just mention one more thing, which is that regardless of what the legislative history shows, the council is free to make an interpretation now because this is the first instance that it is considering an application and can make an interpretation based on its intent to allow cannabis establishments on Glencoe Road that are 500 feet or more in walking distance from a public park. Do we have time for some of the owners to make some comments?
Yeah, I think you have 40 minutes and 10 seconds.
I just wanted to reiterate what you were saying about keeping the kids safe and away from our buildings. We stop everybody as soon as they come up to the door. I need them. I'm a mom through the boys. I am very, I take it very serious about the medicine and keeping it away from children and minors under age of 21. And I would feel very comfortable raising my kids within feet of any of my dispensaries. We have no crime rates or anything like that.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say about that issue, the OLCC, they run stings where they send in minors as a decoy to see if you're IDing people. And they've done that to us in the past. We have caught people that have come in that are underage, that are minors, that are trying to buy cannabis. And we've gotten letters from the OLCC for jobs, et cetera, you know, and blocking people that are minors from coming into your store. And I just wanted to say, this is, should be a common sense thing. It's obviously that people walk. They don't fly. So I don't understand why we have to mention this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Staff, Steve, Ann, or Chris, or Rob, are there any, any things that you would like to say? Any additional comments that you'd like to make?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Just some additional clarification comments. And then I also have, I would like Chris to comment on something as well. So I think one, one comment that was made tonight that's very important is the measurement for the school buffer. That particular measurement comes from state law and it does indicate how that that buffer is supposed to be applied. So that's why when you look at our map, it does show the park buffer, I mean, the school buffer being measured in a radius. They did not have that same requirement for the parks. That's where we're a little more restrictive than state law in that regard. And so in terms of the walking path measurement, it would apply to all parks in the city, which would include Jesse Mays as well. The one measurement that was removed from Jesse Mays that was part of this particular amendment was the 1,000-foot additional buffer that was around Jesse Mays because that buffer reached down into the Glencoe West Union Commercial Intersection and prohibited some of those properties from being available for potential dispensaries. And so in addition to changing the measurement for the parks to a walking path, we also removed the additional 1,000-foot buffer around Jesse Mays. And now it was that the walking path measurement would apply to any park in the city. There was conversation about the various type of ways to measure a buffer. And I would like, Chris, if he could, to comment a little bit on the differences, you know, where he may have seen straight line versus walking path in his experience.
Thank, thank you, planning manager Miller. Yeah, my comments boil down to just two things. One is the core issue here is how to interpret the code provision regarding the 500-foot buffer. The code does not clarify whether it's a straight line measurement or a walking, driving distance measurement. So it is up to the council to decide what you think it means and the courts will defer to that, generally speaking. The other thing is I have seen it done both ways just recently. Frankly, there was a, we first part of this year, late last year, I was working on a project in the DOWs regarding a billboard and they have a measurement that says you can't have more than, I think it was, three billboards within 500 feet, say. And the question was whether that 500 feet was measured, the straight line or a walking, driving distance. And the city council ended up saying, "No, we think it's a walking, driving distance" and approved the billboard. If it were a straight line measurement, they couldn't have approved it. So they were faced with exactly the same question you're facing tonight and they decided that the walking line, or walking, driving distance was what they intended with that measurement. Other jurisdictions do it a straight line test. Where the code isn't clear, it's up to the council to decide. Where the code isn't clear, it's up to the council to decide, and it's been done both ways in, you know, the, in recent past. So it, it's up to the council, really. As long as you adopt an interpretation of that code provision that is consistent with the wording, that is a plausible interpretation, again, the courts will defer to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve, if you could turn to page 389 from the packet. Um, it starts with the code 155.075 marijuana businesses.
389.
389.
Yes.
Are you there?
Yes. Yes.
You look at the third, number three, it says, no structure shall be located within 100 feet of a residentially zoned property as measured from the property line. Can you tell me, can you explain that to me as far as what the property line is for this proposed site? And then to the property line, I, I know there are homes right behind it. So I need a visual, I need you to, how, how many feet is it from property line to property line?
Well, I had measured it from the closest property line to the rear of the building, to the east end of the proposed building. That particular measurement is approximately 320 feet.
It says, as measured from the property line.
So measuring it from the property line of the residential property, 100 feet to the west, does not hit the building in question. It falls into the back portion of the property, so the building is outside of the buffer. It doesn't even touch the parking lot. The building from the nearest property line is 320 feet approximately.
So the property, so I'm thinking the property line of the building, where the building is, the parking lot, right? Because further east, I would imagine. And then, so I'm, I'm just wondering, where's the property line for the, for this, this, not just the building, but the entire?
Right, that's what I'm saying, I'm saying that the subject property.
And can I, can you show me where I can see that?
Yes, yes, absolutely, Mayor. Let me go to the internet here real quick and get a map for you. Now, once I have it here, I will put it up on the screen. Let me go ahead and share my screen for you.
So it's, it's more than 100 feet from the property line of those houses of Curtis to the property line of the business, is more than 100 feet?
So from the rear of the business.
This is the property line, just the property wall.
Wall is near the property line.
Where's the property?
Where's the property line for the bu, for the business?
It's, it's right here.
The code says the structure, though.
So this is, this is the property line for the property. It comes up here and then it comes around like that. That's, that's the property. This particular portion is part of the G4 property. This area here is G4, and this is the subject property. So it comes up, it hits the G4 property, it goes to the north, and then it continues to the east to where it abuts the fences of the residential property. It goes over a little bit and it comes back down to Glencoe.
So number three says, no structure shall be located within 100 feet of the residentially zoned property as measured by, from the property line.
Correct.
So wouldn't that be, that property line for that business is actually a less defense to the residential home?
It's from the structure, from the structure for the business to the fence line of the residential in a straight line, is how, is how staff understood to make that measurement.
So the, the property line, the, the sentence in number three, is the property line for the residential home and not the business?
No structure shall be located within 100 feet of a residentially zoned property. That would be, the way I understand that, that would be the structure for the use.
The word property in that provision modifies residentially zoned. So when it chooses the word property, it refers to the residentially zoned property. So when it says, as measured from the property line, it's the property line for the residentially zoned property. So the structure of the, of the insurance building there cannot be less than 100 feet from that property line.
The property line of the residential zone.
So we're not taking into account the actual property behind the building, the actual lot, the property lot.
Correct, it says the structure.
Just the structure.
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris.
Any other comments from staff at this time? And councillors, feel free to ask questions.
I, I don't have anymore. I don't know if Chris has anymore, but that's, that's all I have at this time.
No, the other thing, the only thing I would add to that is the distinction between how, what paragraph three there and paragraph four are phrased. Three, as you point out, does provide greater guidance on how to measure the distance, right? From the property line to the structure. Four doesn't contain any such guidance, which is why we're here, frankly. It just says, within 500 feet of a public park, but doesn't give you, from the property line of the public park, from the first structure, from the structure of the, on the subject property, from the property line of the subject property, it doesn't provide you any guidance, unlike subsection three. So it's really up to the council to provide meaning to that subsection four.
Yep, thank you. Councillor Martinez, I want to make sure that your voice is heard, and if you have any questions for staff.
I don't have any specific questions, I just have comments when we, as the council discuss.
Okay, sounds great. Last call for councillors to ask staff questions before I close the record. Councillor Payton?
And I apologize, I don't know where this might, what page number this is on the packet, so I'm going to refer to this paper copy. I just wanted to clarify a couple things. Do you have this ability to this packet here?
We, we have the packet, yes.
What, what page number is it on in the agenda? I can maybe reference it with you.
The map.
Yeah.
I believe the map you're looking at is the map that was associated with the 2016 rules, is that correct?
And this is more in, in May 2022.
Yes, May 22nd, but it is the map that goes with the 2016 rules. The date was just put on there by a 3J for that particular meeting day, that was when the meeting was. I mean, I can pull that map up, I, I have it on my slides. So I'll just go ahead and share.
Okay, perfect.
And then maybe that will help.
So I just, I want to clarify, this is the map that was in our packet for 2022.
This map was in the planning commission's work session when they started the beginning of the conversation back in May. So when they started the work session in May, this was the premise of that work session, to look at this map, to discuss the buffers and the setbacks that were in the current rules at that time. And, and this map went with that adoption of 2016 rules. So this shows you how the buffers would have laid out based upon how the council adopted the 2016 marijuana rules. So that, that was the foundation for the discussion. And as a result, like I indicated, it progressed, you know, through those work sessions to, to this map, and, and then finally to, to that map.
Okay. My other question, but again, I apologize that this is not an easily accessible spot in the packet. However, I'm just looking through some of the material provided by the applicants. And there is a, a map here of measured distance from a warden park to the structure. And it says total distance, 1,003 feet. I, I'm not an expert, I'm going to differ with you, but how accurate are these measurements?
Yes, so let me share that again, let me share my screen again. So this is essentially what you're looking at. And so when you measure, get some of this stuff out of my way here. It's not giving me what I want. Measure distance, we measure on the park here. We start at the southern boundary, and we go down the street. So you get to approximately 275 feet by the time you get to the corner, maybe more of 280ish. And then at that point, you turn the corner. You know, it'd be another 120 feet or so. So 500, 220, I mean, ends at about here. But the way the rules were proposed, the, it was either 500 feet or it stops at an arterial street. So even if 500 feet wrapped around the corner of this property here, the, the buffer ends at the arterial street. So it was whatever came first, 500 feet, or it ends at an arterial street. Similarly, when you go to the north, you'll see that 500 feet lands you approximately in the lot. Again, it's about 340 feet from the northern edge of the, of the park. And then as you turn the corner, the additional 160 feet or so gets you around the middle of the property there, behind King Torda. But again, because it intersects with Glencoe, which is an arterial street, the buffer at a minimum would have stopped at the arterial street. And you can see the subject property is here.
One other random question, but let's say this were in a different spot in town. And 10 years from now, a walking path was developed, or something along those features. Is there something in the code that would grandfather in?
Effectively, you're, if it's approved, it would be that way. And I think Chris can answer that too, but, you know, once you approve it, if there's a rule change, they are approved based upon the rules that were in place at that time. You, you can't go back and retroactively apply a new rule to an approved conditional use permit. It's based on what was in the books at the time it was approved.
That's correct, it's called a non-conforming use. As long as the use continues, then there's, it doesn't get discontinued for more than a year, then it would be allowed to continue because it was approved under the law in effect at the time.
Right, and that, that's a good point. So if it discontinued, that would be different. But if it maintained operation and there was a rule change, as Chris noted, it does become a non-conforming use. And that is, that is the legal term that the state uses for being grandfathered effectively.
Thank you.
Chris?
Yes, sir.
Can this, this line measurement, the circle? Is it, do we have the ability here tonight to shorten that distance to 500 feet, 300?
No, 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 yeah, because this is, because the kind of application it is, you have to apply the code as it is today. If you later want to amend the code, you can do that, but you can't amend the code tonight.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Hearing none, I will then go ahead and close the record, and no more evidence or testimony will be received after this point. So now the council has the opportunity to discuss the application and deliberate. So Councillor Martinez, I know you mentioned you do have some comments. If you don't mind, if you're all right, I'll start with you.
Sure, so, um, yeah, for me, and looking through all the evidence, time spent, all of that, I too thought that the 500 feet of any public park, when we discussed, was in a straight line or circumference matter. So my understanding was that if a business marijuana dispensary, psychosilvan, would be brought in, would be on the west side of Glencoe Road. So I too have kind of just concerns, obviously, with the way number four is written in here. And so we've had so many just doubt, assumptions, intent, but nothing, you know, sticking and specific in the code. So I'm having a real hard time trying to distinguish of going against what planning commission decided. So that's kind of just my thoughts and where I currently stand with all the info provided.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you for that. Councillor Page?
We're here tonight, we had over 1,035 pages, and this is sort of many, many meetings. And this is why law and tools are very important, to be clear. Having two codes, walking and circular distances is kind of parry. There are deals that buy houses and make decisions on that, do that startup businesses, invest time and energy and money, these things, because things cannot be clear. I like to be clear that it is based on a circle, it's based on a radius. And I think we have it as the same always, you know, save people time, energy and money. I think this is to be clear, and I'm going to, I'm going to affirm the planning commissions.
I want to acknowledge that, you know, in looking at the history and some of the meetings that we've attended and, and the documents, you know, many, many eyes have been on this document over the months, right? The planning commission's eyes, staff's eyes, the councillor's eyes, and nobody caught it. Like, nobody said, hey, wait a minute, didn't we change X, right? Nobody came forth and said that, right? I think there were two planning commissioners that provided some written testimony and said, hey, yeah, I remember us having that conversation about the intent, right? But, but even at the planning commission, and I'm not pointing fingers, because when I look at this, I look at this as like, we're a team, like, all of us looked at this. Planning commissioner, staff, us, people looked at this. And nobody said, hey, wait a second, we have a problem here, right? This was the intent, why didn't it get changed, right? And so when I look at it, I, I think to myself, well, we approved it the way it is. We had that opportunity to have those conversations. And, and I don't know if it was an oversight or, or what, or maybe the, the intent might have been there, but nobody stepped up and said, this is truly how we feel it should be, we want it changed, it wasn't changed. So when it came to us to be reviewed, right? It came to us looking just like this. And I read through it, I know you all read through your packet, and at the time, even, I don't remember staff saying, hey, wait a second, this was changed. Like, all the other changes are in there, right? All their other guidelines are out in there, and everything else has changed, but not that comfortable, right? And if you look at the psilocybin one, it's the same way, like, that hasn't been changed either, right? So it's hard for me to justify opposing what the planning commission had made a recommendation, because we voted on this. We voted on it, and it's, so it's hard for me to say, well, I'm going to change this now because this, you know, initially I voted on it, because I read it and saw it and I enjoyed it. So, I mean, I don't, I don't know how you all think about it, but I'd love to hear your thoughts.
I think for me, again, it's kind of, everyone's kind of assuming one thing. And so for it to not be concrete and clear, like, this is, this is what it is, and those people that lived along Curtis or neighboring properties would have had the opportunity maybe then, because they would have, you know, those code changes would have been. would have had the opportunity maybe then, because they would have, you know, those code changes would have been listed out there. But since we didn't, you know, that didn't come up and that wasn't confirmed, these are all just kind of like proposed intent, assume. So there's just too much doubt to just not uphold what planning commission has kind of stated. I mean, they all voted unanimously to deny. So that's kind of just where I'm standing, where I'm coming from. And just from thoughts that I remember having. And I was, I mean, the park was initially my thought when this was discussed even before. So I think in my mind, thinking that the west side of Glencoe was where something like this could be, that, that, that threw the park part of it out of it for me, because that wasn't, you know, the other side wasn't an option.
Councilor Kendall?
Yes. Thinking of the map of the circles, we did that a long time ago and it's very simple and concise. I'm not against the, what's going, what's supposed to be there, the marijuana shop, or whatever you call it. I'm not opposed to that at all. I think the distance should be shortened, make it simple and be uniform with the circle we have in the city. And that can be done. The planning commission did a lot of work on that and it could have been worked that way, but I, I, it's, that's the way it is now. I don't want to stick with that. I'm not against, as I said, I'm not against the, the app and for what they want to put in. I don't want to be consistent with the code that it is today. And what we do was changing. Shorter distance, produce something, like the attorney said.
Show.
Okay. Basically, it's a matter of principle for me. Clearly, my intent, when I voted, was a straight line in the circumference. And it can't be interpreted any other way. So maybe we can interpret how we didn't decide. But we defined it based on what the state's definition was at the time for the schools. And I know there was discussion, there might, there might have been a fair amount of discussion, maybe more so at the planning commission level. I've studied all the documents. I come back to the primary decision and the weight of my decision. So I'm in support of affirming the planning commission's denial. I'm not opposed to a dispensary. But I think it's a clear cut. For me, cut and dry, it's a matter of policy. Yes, we do need to define our code. We need, it lacks the definition. So I think that's something that we need to work on. But as for the matter tonight, I'm not interested in a really entertaining any changes to how we define it at this time. So I, I just think it may be unfortunate for the advocate, but that's, that's where I stand. I don't, I don't see it any different. And I don't think I, you know, I don't think, I'm in a way where, I'm not in a way where I am in favor of affirming the planning commission's, planning commission's denial of that.
Thank you for that. I, you know, I want to make a comment too about staff, because I know several folks have commented about staff and you know, staff does the best that they can. And when they were going through this process of providing the city council and the planning commission with the information that they needed and that we needed in order to make a decision, they brought everything they could to the table so that we can make an informed decision. And I, I know that it might not be popular with some people in the community about some of the information that was brought to the table, but I appreciate the effort and I want to acknowledge that. And I know it's not been easy for staff as well. And, but I, but I, I just want to acknowledge and appreciate the effort that you all went through to, to bring a thousand and ninety-five pages to us. Let me tell you, that was, that was a little painful coming back from vacation, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
I appreciate that, Mary. Thank you. And there was a lot of information, so.
Yeah, there was a lot of it.
Took the time to look at it.
Yeah, a lot of information. So what is, what is the will of council here?
I'm going to move to uphold the denial.
The motion?
Oh, is that a big motion?
Please.
I would like to make a motion to uphold the denial of the dispensary by the uphold denial made by the planning commission. Is there orders for this?
No, no, it's just a moment.
Okay. I move to uphold the denial of the, of the planning commission on this matter.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, we'll give that to Councilor Martinez for a second. All right. Any further discussion? All right. All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. I do my, I'm, I'm, hold on, I'll look at my little list here. All right. So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing at nine oh one. Thank you all for your testimony and your time and for, for being here. I really appreciate it. Thank you. All right. We do have a couple more items on our agenda. City manager report, I don't know, can you turn this over to you, Rob?
Thank you, Mayor Lenahan, counsel. I'll be brief. I attended my first garlic festival this past week and was impressed with the turnout and the community cooperation on it was nicely done. And my house smells like garlic now. So, thank you very much.
You've been, you've been crystal, right?
Yes. The position in finance has been filled and the person will be named publicly very soon, but she's very qualified and will be a strong backup to bill our finance director. And lastly, the city manager process is moving along. The consultant ended up receiving twenty-three applications. I talked with the consultant today about apps are extremely strong and will be recommended to move forward. And I'll work with the mayor and council to find a time where you can meet in an executive session and maybe filter down the list from give or take eleven strong applications to maybe a little bit larger group. And then you can refine it down and give the community opportunity to meet the finals.
Would you explain why that's done in executive session?
Because you are allowed to talk about specific candidates or qualifications or limitations. And under Oregon law, your decision will be a public decision when you get past a filtering process. So if there are three to five finalists, the public will have an opportunity to meet them. And then the public process and council will then need to make a decision in public why they do or don't support someone. But the law does allow a discussion referencing somebody's background, maybe credit report, criminal record, et cetera.
Thank you. I just, I wanted that to be out there.
Right, right. Well, the intent would be based on my short time working with all of you that in my past, I'd rather we be open and transparent about who the finalists are. Receive public input. They get a chance to meet them, shake their hand, hear them maybe answer formal questions at some point in the process.
Any comments or questions for Ron?
Can you, at a timeframe, how long these processes take to get to the manager?
Yes, counselor. It could be possible to have someone decided by Thanksgiving. We're on time in the process and seems to, the consultant's doing a good job of moving along while also doing a good filtering process.
Thank you.
All right. Councilor Martinez, any comments or questions for Ron?
No, just thank you again for, for being here.
Thank you.
All right. Any council reports?
I was on deck to go to the library for last Wednesday, but they didn't have a core. So they had a guest. I think she's looking for another meeting tomorrow. She has to get down. I worked every other Monday, Wednesday, call it what I'm going to say, it's just the odd work week, until eight P M. I could try to sneak up early and I don't think there's any fires at my work, but I don't know. So I could try to still attend that at six o'clock, but it'd probably be better if I had some working commitment, a free time to, to take my, my other place. Again, I was scheduled for last Wednesday, which is my opening for however from work, I have a little TikTok going on here, we have a week. And they wanted to today, we said, we reschedule it for tomorrow.
For Tuesday or?
I'm sorry, not Tuesday, Wednesday.
For Wednesday this year?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I can still make it. I think I have to get out of work. It depends on what's going on at work, depends on my, my ability to get out. And sometimes things are just
We'll do some sweet talk and see if anybody else can fill in for you.
Yeah. If anybody has a reschedule and wants to take the spot, however, I'm almost at a point like, do we really need to have a meeting? Should we just skip it for this one? Right? It's important to have a meeting a week, a week later. So I'm just trying to figure that out too.
Yeah, I told them it's not critical that he attend. I mean, we've had meetings without ex officios in the past.
Which day did the meeting?
Pardon me?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, yeah. This Wednesday, yes. It was supposed to be last Wednesday.
So it's a reschedule.
Yeah, they didn't have a forum last Wednesday. So they want to hold this. This Wednesday, the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, they came in at the last minute.
Seven P M.
Six. Seven, yes.
Six.
Six. They changed it to six.
I'll take it.
Russ, you'll take it?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I'll, I'll know the day of what's happening in work.
That was a really good sweet talking there.
I know. Thanks, Russ. I'll let Robin know.
Yes.
And it is at six, yes.
Also, the twenty-fifth, night of the tw- sorry, the night of the twenty-seventh of September, next month. I'll be at the fire department and as a, as a fireman for a little while, for one night.
For one night?
Please start the fires if you can. Hit it with a fire. Absolutely, I'd be in there. I'd have an axe.
Are you doing the citizen academy?
I am.
Very cool. You'll have fun.
I'm going to spend the night there. And they're going to be doing the trucking thing and chop down things with, with an axe, so.
Yeah.
The fires, hope for that anyway.
Yeah, be prepared, I think, in a week. I remember when I did it, like, no sleep.
All right.
Um, sorry, I did have, just real quick, I did the E D C and Parks and Rec. So just real quick, E D C is actually working on a survey. They're redoing an old one. I think it was from, gosh, like, twenty nineteen, definitely before COVID, to send out to businesses and have them, you know, update, get more information of how they can assist and be helpful to businesses. We talked about, you know, doing like a business passport or something different. And they're also going to be having a work session with the Chamber of Commerce. So I thought that was kind of cool to connect with them and see how they can assist there. And then Parks and Rec, it's a little bit old, but obviously the concert in the park was this last weekend. And then they discussed a lot about the last section phase of Bryn Hill and what those parks would look like over there. So there was a lot of different discussions of, you know, possibly utilizing the space so that they could do more concert in the parks over there. I sent them some info on a, a little splash pad that Salt and Straw has. So if you're interested in Parks and Rec and what that could look like in that last phase of Bryn Hill, maybe stay tuned for their next meeting because they were going to connect with Linnon.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilor Martinez, any other report?
This past Thursday, I had the pleasure to attend a bus tour on behalf of the Community Development Block Grant Group for Policy Advisory Board. It was the fiftieth anniversary celebration. So we were able to do a tour to visit some of the sites within Washington County that funding has gone, gone to. So that was very informative. I do want to shout out Mr. Drake at the end of the table here, because during that tour, I learned that on Saturday, the seventh, I believe, there's a ribbon cutting for the Drake Center in the Cornelius Library. So time, what was the time that that was created?
I was, I'm going to have Corinne
Oh, yeah.
Post something.
Yeah, let's get that posted. Show our support.
Yep.
But overall, it was a great, great tour. Got to see Counselor Kendall at the very end and yeah, just September seventh, mark the calendars for Mr. Drake. That's all I have. Great. All right. Anything else? Okay, next meeting is actually one Tuesday, September third. And so that'll be a good meeting. We will be looking at the rework committee. And so hopefully everyone will be in attendance for that. And then it looks like Counselor Page, you have economic department then on the fourth on the next night. Good? All right. If there's nothing else, I'll go ahead and close our city council meeting at nine twelve. Thank you, everyone, and have a good night.